Call the meeting in order to call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani. Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the April 1st, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the board of trustee meeting of April 1st, 2024.
Second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Earth Day and Arbor Day proclamations.
Earth Day and Arbor Day 2024, whereas in 1872 Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. It's hard to know it now. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, whereas the Village Warland Park has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 35 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I Keith Pico, Mayor of the Village of Warland Park, Cook, and Will County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day and April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day in the Village of Warland Park, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our environment and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Monarch Butterfly Day proclamation.
Monarch Butterfly Day 2024, whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species who from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and the Village Warland Park has played a leadership role by establishing two monarch wayfinding habitats at the Village Hall Green Roof and the Stellwagen Farm Prairie, and participating in the Monarch Village USA program. And whereas every citizen of Warland Park can make a difference for the monarch butterfly by planting a native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch butterflies and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, and play. Whereas on behalf of the people of Warland Park, who have already joined me in creating a healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, I am honored for Warland Park to be an official Monarch Village USA, and I encourage other city officials across the nation to take a stand with me so that the monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Now therefore, I Keith Pico, Mayor of Village of Warland Park, Cook, and Will County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 30th as Monarch Butterfly Day in the Village of Warland Park, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect the monarch butterfly and promote their well-being for the benefit of present and future generations. And if I might add, pollinators in general are very important as our, you know, protecting our trees, they have a lot of benefits. Obviously, I used to be, although my certification has lapsed, I used to be a certified arborist. So I encourage that. Diversify your species that are on there, don't plant the same plant, the same tree everywhere, so we don't have another Emerald Ash Bore experience. But that's one of the reasons why we plant things on the parkway, it slows down traffic. There's a lot of positives to having that, from stormwater to traffic, and just looks a lot nicer. So that's that.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
So agenda-specific, we have someone here to speak on the kratom ban. And a reminder, you have three minutes, the board doesn't engage you in entertaining questions, you have three minutes to make your statement. So Daniel Peterson of New Lennox.
All right, thank you for your time today. I don't always check all my emails, but when I checked this morning, and I saw an email alert from the American Kratom Association saying that you're going to potentially ban kratom, I knew that I had to come here tonight because what you are doing is quite frankly wrong. I've had to do this before at other village hall meetings like in Naperville, and fortunately, they did not go ahead and vote to ban it. And this right here is a one kilo or 2.2 pound bag of kratom in powder form. I have my mug here filled with it because I haven't been able to cap so many pills lately, but I use this every single day, every single day for my pain management because I have a herniated back, I have a rotator cuff impingement in my right arm, and if I do not have any proper medication to deal with this issue, I am writhing in pain every day. There is nothing else that I can do about it because I don't currently have proper health insurance. Even if I did have health insurance, the price of the opioid medications is prohibitively expensive, and as you all know, we have an opioid crisis in this country because they are so addictive. If you don't know, kratom is a plant in the coffee family, so it is not even an opioid, despite the fact that it has functioned to work on your opioid receptors. So basically, when I see something like this, what I see is people telling me that you have to sit here and suffer in pain, you have to be on medications that are addictive and destructive to our communities and our country, and you have no other options. So when I see that, I know that I have to come out here, and I have to say at least something to stop what I view as un-American, un-Christian, and quite frankly reprehensible. So I really urge you all to at least postpone this vote until you can educate yourself more about this, not by reading propaganda that's just from the USDA and all those organizations, but actually do some real research into it and see what it's all about. Because for people like me, I don't know what I would be doing, you know, if I wasn't able to get this relief from this pain. I could not be driving two hours out to St. John in Deanna to do my job and present people, animals, to educate them with, you know, for conservation reasons. I couldn't go out and I couldn't play disc golf because my arm would be just destroyed by the pain that I feel. So I don't understand why these things keep on coming up. It's not a recreational drug, it's not a psychoactive substance, it's medication. So I just want you all to understand that, because what you're saying essentially by voting yes is that you Dan Peterson deserve to sit here and suffer in pain every single day or get addicted to opioid medications. So I urge you, please do not vote yes, in the very least postpone this vote until you can consider more facts on the matter. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Thank you, I yield the floor.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here to speak on agenda items? Okay.
Accounts payable April 2nd, 2024 through April 15th, 2024 approval.
Mr. Mayor. Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable April 2nd, 2024 through April 15th, 2024 in the amount of $4,193,124.74.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A payroll for March 29th, 2024 approval, item B amend seven, Title VII, Chapter IV, number of Class A and Class A5 liquor license ordinances. Item C Henderson Mark E dump bodies with plow packages and FSH V-Box spreaders purchased, that was hard for me to say for some reason. Item D Civic Center Carpet and Flooring Replacement Project. Item E Special Event Purpose for Bounce the City Inflatable Event, greater than 400 people. Item F Appointment of New Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent for the Village of Warland Park Resolution. Item G Purchase and Installation of Weather Guard Work Van Equipment. Item H Renewal for the Code Red Emergency Notification. Item I Rock Salt Certificate of Authority by Vote and Rock Salt Purchase. Item J Schueller Park Restroom and Storage Building. Item K An Ordinance Revising Chapter 18 Video Gaming of Title VII Business and License of the Warland Park Village Code and Making Other Changes Relative to Video Gaming Within the Village. Item L Stellwagen Farm Lease 2024 to 2026. Mr. Chairman. Trustee Compass.
Move to approve items A through L of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
AE Services OPHFC Pool Renovation Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve the proposal from Williams Architect for AE Services for the OPHFC Pool Renovation Project for a total not to exceed $247,222.50, which is $235,450 plus a 5% contingency of $11,772.50, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
A second. So I have a question for you. I see us going to the second low bidder. So it says here that you're afraid that TRIA architecture doesn't have the personnel resources to complete the project within the allocated period of time, but they were pre-approved and pre-qualified. So can you explain, because that's a pretty significant savings?
Yes, so when we were looking at TRIA's current work with their CPAC, just based on the schedule of that progress ongoing, it's a little bit behind schedule, and so we said adding additional task order to the staff would stretch their resources beyond the limit that they have. So that's why we went with the second bidder, just because knowledge of the other project still working through the schedule and getting that schedule to us.
So how far are they, how far behind are they on the project?
It's about a month behind.
And when is the one that they're working on, is it supposed to be done?
It's supposed to be done in May timeframe, so we can bid it out, so work can start once the pool closes in the fall.
No, so the one they're working on now is supposed to be done?
Correct.
In May, and it's not going to be done until?
We were hoping to, yeah, be done here, April timeframe of getting it done.
Oh, so now it's going to be May?
Yes.
Okay, and then this work, when is it going to be done?
So this work would be completed by the end of the year so that we can bid it out for next year.
So they have until the end of the year, but they have a, and they have a project that's going on until May?
Correct.
Okay. And so I guess I have the question, since they're going to be done in a month, and then they have all of this time, it wouldn't seem that our project is going to be the one that's stretching their resources, and we still have them as a qualified vendor.
Correct, yeah, there is that gap, but we just saw, we saw if we kicked it off now, you know, they would be behind the schedule already right off the bat because they're working on the other projects still. So we wouldn't even be talking from the staff until June timeframe to really get going, and we'd like to get this work done so that we're ready for the fall. You'd just delay it even further.
But this project is till the end of the year, correct?
Yes. And they'll need all those months to get it finished up. By the time they look at all the work, design it, and put the package together, it just would delay that to a much shorter period of time if we went with TRIA.
Okay, do we have any other comments? From the board? Yeah, I guess I just, I have concerns about going to, you know, paying 32 grand more if we've already qualified them already. That's my concern.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Compass.
So I guess the follow-up question to this, because I had the same concerns, now obviously hearing more about the current state of the CPAC work does color that a little bit differently for me, but I guess the question I have is, is it, do we know for a fact it'd be the same staff that would work on both?
Because they're both pool designs that, you know, it'd be the same group that is be addressing. TRIA doesn't have a large staff in their organization, so the same pool of people would be doing the same work.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Have you talked to the first spender to see if they could catch up? I mean, did you give them that opportunity or have that conversation with them?
Yes, we've had several conversations about how far they're slipping behind on their current schedule to get them completed, but they still needed that time to finish. The Warland Pool is a complex scope of work, but they knew that when they bid it first time.
When did the, when did the work they're currently doing, when did it start?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't recall, it was probably fall, late, beginning of early fall timeframe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So just to verify, this is fixed fee, right? We're not, we're not tapping materials on this?
Correct, fixed.
So effectively, we'd be taking on a risk of 15% that we're trying to mitigate by taking the second lowest bidder, when we only have a 5% contingency on, in general, right? So they'd still have to make it, so basically it's a bet as to whether or not they're going to be late on this, and whether or not that difference is going to be worth the 15% difference.
And Dennis, as the attorney, what's our, and I know we can, as a home rule authority, we have some latitude here, but what's the?
Generally, you go with the lowest bidder or responder, but you can obviously take into consideration their past history with the village, and it seems like that's what Joel's banking on here. I'm not sure the reason why they fell behind, and maybe that's an important factor, but it's certainly up to the board to decide whether or not there's enough factors that justifies a $30,000 increase to the next responsible bidder, if you will.
And do we have any experience with these, with the low bidder in the past besides the project we're working on now?
Not with the current MSA that we awarded a few years back.
Okay, but have we worked with TRIA architecture at all before?
Before my time, Mayor, I don't recall.
Okay. So where I'm struggling with, where I'm struggling with here is that we, they're pre-qualified. We've qualified them.
Correct.
And now we're going to go, and we know the situation we're in, grocery tax and other stuff that we're dealing with here, and from a, I mean, that could potentially hit the budget July 1st, you know, it'd be a $1.25 million hit. I have a tough time justifying spending 35 or $32,000. You said they're a month behind?
Yes, initially, yes, that's what.
They were supposed to be done approximately now, and they're going to be done in a month?
They'll be done in the May timeframe, yes, for the.
Do you have any objections to the quality of their work?
No, it's more of the responsiveness of completing the project on time.
So it's a function of they're just not finishing in the time they may?
Correct.
Right, okay. So I'm also looking at all of the other projects we have across the village, how many of those are actually on time that we did over the winter? Most of them are running behind.
The AE Services are generally, generally, I would say, on time, there's been a few that has added a few, but that may have been because of a review or something like that that occurred, but generally with architects, they, they're hitting on target. Yeah, our dilemma really is if they have the same people, right, their pool, and they're going to start later, that's just going to compress that schedule, which they've demonstrated now they can't hit the schedule, and now we're going to compress it into a shorter period of time to get it.
So Village Warland Park's a pretty important client, I would imagine, so I would be more inclined to take the low bidder and say, if you're late on this one, you will be unqualified going forward, and you won't bid anything in the future. I think that puts a pretty big onus on them to stay on track and on time, and then we don't expend that $30,000. If we still think that they're, you know, capable of doing the work, I think that puts the appropriate, and if they don't hit the deadline, then you unqualify them so that they cannot bid again. So I would entertain a motion to approve, hold on.
Mr. Chairman.
I will entertain a motion to amend the motion to approve TRIA architecture at $203,110 plus a 5% contingency.
Mr. Chairman. I move to amend the motion to approve the proposal from TRIA Architects for AE Services for the OPHFC Pool Renovation Project for a total amount not to exceed $213,265.50, which is $203,110, plus a 5% contingency of $10,155.50. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to attorney review.
Any comments on the amended motion? Call the roll on the amend, on the amendment.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Any other comments on the overall motion? Please call the roll on the amended motion approving TRIA as the contractor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Purchase and installation of NAPHEDE Aluminum KUVCC Enclosed Utility Body and NAPHEDE Aluminum Service Utility Body.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon. I move to waive bidding and approve the proposals from NAPHEDE Truck Equipment Center of McHenry, Illinois for the purchase and installation of one NAPHEDE KUVCC Enclosed Aluminum Utility Body for the amount of $71,675.53 per the quote number 279136-5 dated April 3rd, 2024, and the purchase and installation of one NAPHEDE Aluminum Utility Service Body for the amount of $21,995 per the quote 404804-2 dated April 4th, 2024, for a total not to exceed $93,670.53, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Pavement rejuvenator Eagle Ridge subdivision.
Mr. Mayor. Trustee Reardon. I move to accept the proposal from Reclamite for pavement preservation application from corrective asphalt materials from South Roxanna, Illinois, under the MPI joint bid for a three-year contract for an amount not to exceed $50,000 for fiscal year 2024, and an amount not to exceed the board-approved funding for fiscal years 2025 and 2026, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
And Joel, this is coming out of the Road Improvement Fund?
Yes.
And could you give just a brief summary for ourselves and the residents, I know what happened, but?
Yes, during the winter season, one of our plow drivers was using both the plow and the underbelly blade on the vehicle. He did not realize that when he was doing that, it actually was scraping off a little bit of the top layer in one subdivision that we had just recently paved. This actually opens up the pores and allows water to freeze when that little bit of asphalt has been scraped. So this product will actually reseal the asphalt and bring the road back up to the longevity that it needs. But we also looked at it as a way to, it's an unfortunate situation, but also we looked at it as, it can also be a product that we want to test and see if we can use it a little bit further, you know, in the timeline of our roads, that could actually extend the life of the roads. So we're kind of using it as a testbed site to look at that for upcoming years, that maybe some other neighborhoods could have that at a less cost than, it's like we have patching in our plan for certain areas, this product could also be utilized to extend that road life a little bit longer. So we're going to take, use it as a unfortunate situation to a good idea.
And for a summary for the, for the board's purposes there, there's two drivers that drive in this subdivision. We thought it was the new driver, but it actually was one of our experienced drivers, who's one of our good employees.
Yes.
And he's always done this, and it's never been an issue. It turned out to be an issue on the new asphalt, partially he's probably never done this, never had new asphalt before, because as you know, we've spent so much more money the last four or five years improving roads. So it was not, it was just an unfortunate mistake, not something of malicious or even following the wrong protocol. We have tied up, we did tie up all those?
We've chained it, and that, we have two vehicles of this underbelly, and we're, those are the ones that we're going to be replacing as soon as we get the turnover of vehicles complete, so they're going out of inventory.
Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. It's a situation of extra cleaning of the surfaces was not a good thing, so.
Fernway Road and Ditch Reconstruction Design Engineering Change Order Number Three.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve Addendum D Change Order Number Three incorporating the proposal from PT Farrell Construction Company of Joliet, Illinois for additional quantities and associated costs for work remaining on the Fernway project, which will result in an increase of $56,390 for a new contract amount not to exceed $4,176,316.6. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to attorney, village attorney review.
Second. Any comments? Mr. Mayor. Trustee Healy.
Joel, do you ever see a time when Fernway's not under construction?
Unfortunately, I did not, I'll have to bring this back one more time, but yes, we had, we maxed out our quantities on the contract, and we have quantity line items, and that's the only reason we had to come back, and we have a few items that we're just going to tidy up, this one section of the road that needed some riprap, some sod, and.
Perhaps next summer?
So.
Oh, it's going to be done June 15th, please don't say next summer, I will get another email from Barb Carey.
Yes, no, no, this, this will be done this spring, and we just had a, we maxed out the quantities, so.
Okay. Any other comments?
And specifically, I'm going to comment for Barb Carey, who has probably sent hundreds of attack social media posts and emails about this. This is all, this stuff in here is the same information that you were given last year and continually about your sod, so the sod will be getting done. Again, we ran across natural gas lines that were not marked.
Right.
This was a Cook County, so people know, this was actually a Cook County area that we annexed, so it was built to standards, not Warland Park standards, we don't have any records, they found gas lines. And smartly, we did two things. One is we said, finish the gas lines before we do the roads, so we don't have to dig them up again, brand-new roads, that makes no sense, it's a waste of money, number one. And number two, we said, hey, finish the gas lines so you don't blow up anybody in the subdivision, which I thought was pretty important and made sense. So because of that, sod was delayed and was not done, and we've been hearing about this for the last, I don't know, five months or whatever. But at the end of the day, you have new ditches, you have new roads, I think most of us would like to have new roads, and you're going to have re-sodded areas, so all that's going to get done, and this is the final piece, and it should be done by June 15th, correct?
Correct.
Everything.
Yep, get out of there.
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
AE Services Police Department Mezzanine Expansion Design.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the proposal from Corgan Clark Associates for AE Services Police Department Mezzanine Expansion Design for a total amount not to exceed $64,717.40, which is 56, excuse me, $58,834 plus 10% contingency of $5,883.40, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and allow the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So we have another situation, but I think we have win-win, although maybe not for the same amount here, because I think during the, when we're talking about the, the pool work, we moved on from Williams, and part of the rationale for this one, and going to second lowest, was to diversify the architect. rationale for this one and going to second lowest was to diversify the architecture. Is that correct?
Correct. We have not used Corrigan. Either they haven't fired a bid because it was too busy, or their bids were maybe higher for a project that they submitted. But in this situation, we'd like to try to use them, see their full capabilities for...
But we just took a bit away from Williams, and they're the low bidder here, so I would contend that we should move to use Williams on this, and Cordigan just needs to tighten... Be a little bit tighter with their bids.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
With that in mind, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the proposal for Williams Architects for A and E Services Police Department Mezzanine Expansion Design for a total amount not to exceed $55,222, which is $50,202 plus 10% contingency of $5,020, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and allow the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
A second.
Are there any comments on the amended motion? Call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Call the roll on the amended motion approving Williams.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Mayor and the village board, I just want to acknowledge, Joel, in this project for the mezzanine, one of the things that we were... What was a problem was they don't have enough storage. We were going to look at other solutions, much more expensive solutions. Joel, with his architectural training, he was able to kind of reevaluate it, and we're going to get them enough storage for the next 20 years with this solution.
Yeah, so that's a very good point, George, because I was involved with that. And one of the things that, you know, I saw the mezzanine chief Rossi brought me up there, and it was... It's pretty bad because some of the stuff we have to store forever, and some stuff, there's limitations on how long we have to store it. But there's a lot of stuff we have to store for a very, very long time in the evidence room. And so one of the thoughts was, hey, we've got all these buildings, all these pump houses that we know about, is can we use one of those that's in good shape? And which we could do, but that's off-site, obviously. We could also rent a place. And then Joel came up with this solution, which is in the same room, under the same lock and key, which is fantastic. So thanks, Joel. It's saving us money in the long run. It's a much better solution from both money spent right now, but also an efficiency standpoint and a security standpoint from evidence. We don't have to add a bunch of cameras somewhere else. So very good work there, Joel. Appreciate it.
Premier Funeral Service, 11275 143rd Street, special use for funeral parlor.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the Planning Commission recommended action for case number 2023/0916, also known as Premier Funeral Services.
Second. Do you want to briefly go through that?
Briefly, yeah.
Yeah, you can go through it really briefly.
Okay, okay. So this is a special use permit for a funeral parlor in an existing building, former bank, and they're proposing a 3,300 plus a square foot addition. It's in the Orland Grove Comprehensive Planning District and Zoned Large-Scale Plan Development. They plan on having off-business hours Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and they'll average about three visitations and three services each week, but funeral staff will also be on-call 24/7. The land use designation is neighborhood mixed use. I guess one main item to note, the lot coverage is being brought closer into compliance. It is part of a bigger development, so the green that you see at the south is also part of the open space as well. So looking at this in the vacuum, it doesn't meet the lot coverage, but it is being brought closer into compliance. Otherwise, I believe everything else is met. The signage will be approved administratively as long as it meets our land development And so the Plan Commission recommended that the village board approve the site plan and building elevations unanimously per the staff recommended action. And so the items are listed at the beginning of... At the bottom of page six... Page five of the report.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay.
Yeah, so this... I mean, I hate to say that this is good economic development for a funeral parlor, but you know, it is something that it happens to everyone. No one outraces Father Time. But obviously, restaurants and things like that, there will be some traffic there. Hopefully, 143rd gets widened. That will help there, but you know, it's a different use than what the building originally was, but you know, it's a good use. It's needed. We're growing... We're still a growing community, so I think it's a good use for the area. Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Athletic Field Equipment Replacement Purchase.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon. I move to approve the purchase of two Sand Pro 5040s and one Field Pro 6040 at a total cost of $121,535 from Reinders Inc. of Mundeline, Illinois, under the Sourcewell Toro Contract 031121-TTC, and authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2024 to 2029 Banking Services Approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve awarding RFP 24-016 Banking Services to BMO Bank at North America for five years as outlined in their technical proposal dated February 28, 2024, and to authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I think one of the goals in going out to look at other institutions was the hope that we had a local bank that could service us. I think that's what, you know, the board certainly wanted, a local bank, hopefully, somebody home to Orland Park. But based on our needs, I guess, Kevin, that wasn't really possible.
We reached out to every single bank in Orland Park that is... That has a business license in Orland Park and advised them of the request for proposals that was out there, even before so... Before we did the RFP, we had met in person and let them know that this RFP was coming, and we... The local banks did not provide proposals. The amount of services that the village takes advantage of, when we talked to BMO, they said, we take advantage of pretty much every single service that is offered, especially related to safety and security. And that breadth of services is not necessarily available at every single bank, especially the smaller banks. So I'm not exactly sure why they didn't... Why local banks didn't provide proposals, but we did reach out to them. We were hoping to get some local interest in providing that service, but we did not get that.
Certainly appreciate your efforts, and I think that was the goal. You know, some of them couldn't handle some of the availability of bank statements, and they had some higher fees. So thank you. Thank you and the staff for looking into that.
And although it's a little bit higher here from a fee perspective, this is a place where I do agree that, especially given the staff turnover and the workload of finance with everything we're implementing with ERP, it does not make sense over this dollar amount to make a change because that's a lot of upheaval whenever you change a bank. It's a lot of work. So I don't think we need to increase that workload or any of that risk of that transition at this particular juncture. Maybe down in the future for 30 grand, it'll make a difference, but I don't think so for right now. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Mayor's Report.
So I'm going to jump into the mayor's report here and not save it for final comments. It's a little bit lengthy, but we did a survey on how people are engaged, and the survey came back that people were very happy in general with our engagement. A lot of people on Facebook, on social media. Next was Instagram, then Twitter, something for people to file away. But anyways, you know, one of the things that we always ask is we ask for commentary, and so we take verbatim comments. Now, the downside of verbatim comments in any kind of survey that you do, you never get happy people put into... Oh, you're doing a great job, and you're doing this wonderfully. Generally speaking, the comments are generally negative. But I thought a lot of these comments, some of them were grouped together or whatnot, but I felt like we could... I could answer a lot of those for people and whether or not they're paying attention. Because again, these people are complaining about the process of... Complaining about not having information, and we're giving them to them now. They're not necessarily paying attention, but nonetheless. So I'm going to just tell you what some of the comments were. Clarification of current projects and how it relates to public input. Are they warranted? Well, as you saw tonight, all the current projects that we have going on were discussed and approved at the village board at least three times, right? So examples, parks are at least three, once at the Rec Advisory Board and twice with us. Many of them more than that because they also go to the Planning Commission and things like that as well sometimes. So some of them have dozens or over a dozen of public hearings on this. Same thing with, like you see, the funeral parlor. I mean, it goes to Planning Commission, then it comes here, right? So you're hearing about it numerous times. Next one was explanations of how village attacks problems. Well, like you saw tonight, we have multiple discussions at our board meetings, and we bring studies, for those who have paid attention to board meetings, we bring studies and facts to the table on everything. For example, we've done thorough assessments on roads, parks, vehicles, sidewalks, buildings, and ponds, just to name a few. And all of those were delivered here, like you saw tonight on the funeral parlor. We've seen very detailed assessments that we've been given that information. All of those were discussed thoroughly as well, and it was public, so people could have asked questions. I also talk about them all at the State of the Village, so I'm... You know, so we've talked about this. So in short, we take a very fact-based approach to this and very public approach to it, so I think that's out there and pretty apparent. Road repair and construction plans, and there were a few others on updates on construction. We do discuss these at board meetings. We have them on our website. We also post them on social media. I also talk to them on the State of the Village. Joel, is our local road program, is that on the website, the areas we're going to do?
I have to check, but it will be.
Yeah, it should be. So you can put that out there and...
I'll make sure it gets happened.
There was a lot of... Here is one, and this is obviously someone who is not real happy with any of us, but I would like to see summaries of village meetings with truthful accounts of the behavior of village officials. There were also probably 10 wanting minutes. Okay, so there were several others that wanted summaries of meetings, and obviously there's this one that makes an accusation that somehow we're not truthful. Well, after Cindy, Mike, who's not here tonight, and Bill got on the board, I pushed to have all of our meetings on video after that was blocked for my first two years. It was completely blocked by the other trustees. I don't think there's anything more truthful than that. We are sitting here right now. The entire board meeting is discussed in public. You can make your own judgment on what we're saying, so I don't know how to bring you anything else but that. And to say that you want truthful accounts, I mean, you can watch it yourself and make your own judgment. So I don't know any other way that we can be any more transparent than that. Watch the meetings regarding the summaries. We also have minutes, and yes, they refer to the videos, but the videos are now indexed to the agenda items to make them more searchable, so it will make it easier because we are trying to make it easier for you to find what you want to find instead of having to scroll through it. And if we... And I promise you, if we summarize them in the minutes, we'd be accused of not putting all the important information in there. So now you can go watch the whole entire discussion. Having it on tape is as transparent as it gets. I would like to know why the mayor purchased 14 commercial vehicles and why they're sitting in the park lined up not being used. Why do we need two of each? Why do we need to replace the police cruisers? Why can't we have the asphalt fixed at Centennial Park? Well, first, let me state, the mayor doesn't purchase anything, okay? I do not have the authority or the power to purchase anything. The board, of which I am one vote, we give that spending approval. In fact, the village manager has a $25,000 approval. Departments have a $5,000 spending authority, and I have zero, okay? Every purchase of our vehicles have been voted on at meetings. We did an assessment of our vehicles a couple of years ago. The report was delivered to the board as we talked about. The average age of our vehicles at the time was over 14 years old, okay? Equipment does not last forever, and in most cases, 14 years is way too long. Most of us probably don't keep our cars 14 years. And what happens is the vehicles cost more for maintenance and in downtime than in getting a new one. So part of that assessment was, what's the optimum time for each class of vehicle to swap out? And so what we're trying... Like this situation, this capital situation, like the others that we've had where we were so far behind, was inherited by all of us on the board. We instituted a five-year plan to get these vehicles fixed and into a better, more sustainable rotation. Police vehicles in particular, believe it or not, they have to replace. They don't run forever, so they have to be replaced pretty regularly. They run almost nonstop, and we need to make sure they're in good condition, obviously. And those that are still in good shape because they didn't get banged up, a lot of our police vehicles get hit by people, believe it or not, so they end up in accidents and things like that, or they might have to use them in such a way to protect people, right? Well, the ones that are in good shape do get repurposed for our CSOs and for ESDA, and sometimes even repurposed into other parts of the village, so we try to be as efficient as possible. As for the Centennial Park asphalt, Centennial Park is our largest park with a number of parking areas and paths. It is not feasible to replace them all at once. We can't afford that. They are included with the village-wide paths and parking lot assessments, and they are replaced on a regular rotation like everything else. These two were neglected. We had to catch up over five years. I can tell you personally, several areas of Centennial Park paths have been replaced and/or repaired in the last few years, and each year, there will be work done in Centennial Park just because it's so big. So we'll be doing stuff every year. How the mayor spends our tax dollars. In reference to what I said previously, the mayor actually does not have authority to directly spend your tax dollars. I do have one vote with the rest of the board, and we have authority over the spending. We have numerous budget meetings. We have significant discussions on our capital plans, which we had a huge one last year which we had a huge one last year in multiple meetings, and these are all done in public. I also talk about all this at the state of the village. Term limits were brought up twice, in bold. Myself and three members of the board, Cindy, Mike, and Bill, along with one of the old board members, Dan Keltner, voted to put this on the board. So trustee Svenning Dodge voted against term limit. We put a referendum on the ballot, it passed 88.5% to 11.5%, which is the highest I've ever seen anywhere, because we researched it. The term limits are three terms, which is 12 years for every position here, beginning from the first election after the term limit referendum was passed. So we've already done that. Voting options for changes happening around the village. Everyone I speak to is unhappy for, is unhappy for important changes being made without votes on it from the people who matter. So I will say that we did do a survey of the strategic plan, including a number of our biggest projects, and I think the lowest one approval rating was like 65%. So that would suggest that people are pretty happy with that. And from time to time, I do hear people like this demand to vote on issues in the village. That's not how government works. We are a representative republic, and voters vote for the representatives, who then vote on the issues. As an example, tonight, we have 25 different items to be voted on, and this is a light agenda. That times 24 board meetings is 600 different things at a minimum that we would vote on for the year. If we likewise held 24 elections a year, that would mean ballot counting, et cetera, that we go through each year, or each month, twice a month. What about mail ballots, absentee ballots, early voting? I think it is pretty obvious that this would be a ridiculously chaotic system to vote on every item. Imagine voting on thousands of pieces of legislation for the Congress, or for the State House, or the library, or the fire districts, or District 135, or District 230. The people who vote on these issues were duly elected by the residents of Orland Park. Four of us have been elected twice. It's our job to vote on these matters, we take these duties very seriously, we spend a lot of time reviewing the supporting information to make our decisions. And of course, always welcome to come to a board meeting and comment on anything that you find is important. List of all campaign donors and individuals donating to PACs that contribute to village Orland Park political campaigns. Campaign donor information, a list of who's paying for the candidates. The village does not have any authority over this. The state board of election is responsible for this and every candidate committee, political party committee, political action committee, PAC, and independent expenditure committee that spends or receives over $5,000 in an election cycle is required to file financial disclosures every quarter at a minimum. These are searchable at state board of elections website. There's also an organization called Illinois Sunshine, you can find at illinois sunshine.org that has this information, because they download it for every, for the entire state all the time and continually update it. A few people on the, it's tedious to navigate. I agree. I think everyone here agrees that our website is tedious to navigate. One of the contributing factors is we put everything on the website, so it can be hard to find. And what one person finds to be natural for navigation, somebody else doesn't, which makes it challenging. I do suggest to anyone out there, if you have specific ideas that would make it easier, send an email to the IT director or to the village manager, it will help us make it better. Crime-related, we had a bunch of them for crime-related. Police calls, all crime reports, police blotter, radio, et cetera. So they want all police reports available. We write thousands of police reports, accidents, tickets, complaints. It is not feasible to put them all on the website. Those issues that we think are of public importance, we put out there, and we put on social media. I have addressed this before. Our number one goal is public safety. It is not to provide continual real-time information to the public. First, often that information, and we sort through, is not accurate, and putting it out there would be, would do a lot more harm than good. Also, sometimes the public reacts to information that makes it harder for us to do your job, do our job, and the police to keep you safe. Lastly, sharing all information would certainly make it harder to prosecute a lot of these crimes. We don't want to do that either, because we want to catch them and put them in jail and prosecute them. So I will say it again, we focus on keeping the public safe first and foremost. We share any information that, based on our experience, increases public safety and helps us do that. Updates on major projects like street expansions in the triangle. We have updates at board meetings regularly and also on the website. So that's where you'll get that information. New businesses, businesses that are opening and closing, there are a bunch of comments on this as well. There are a lot of businesses that come and go, and many of them don't have to be licensed. We certainly keep people informed on all our ribbon cuttings, and we advertise those on social media. We do not have the bandwidth or the knowledge to keep people informed of all of these. Plus, it is not necessarily appropriate for the village to weigh in and market for new companies, et cetera. So we do the best we can there. Garbage service schedule. Does anybody know, is that on the website? So I see a head nod that it is on the web, so it is there. So people were asking about that. I know when mine is, so I don't really go to the website looking for it, but I do know that we include changes due to holidays, special collection events, and other things on social media and on the website. Easier link to see the status of current and future projects, easier to find how to report potholes, just the same comment. Regarding the potholes, it's easy to report via our 3-1-1 system and online. You can also email the address of the pothole to us, we'll put them on the list, we fill about 4,000 of them a year. And we do rely on you to tell us, because we are not driving every street to see the potholes. So if you see them, please tell us. Regarding projects and future projects, we can't divulge a lot of information that the potential petitioners consider confidential. Until they submit plans, they may not be public. So once they submit plans, they become public, and they're often at our, and they go to our planning commission typically, not always, sometimes just appearance, but typically they go to planning commission, then our board meetings and public meetings, so they're out there. We don't track a private project scheduled, so we don't know how they're tracking. Regarding village projects, we do give regular updates, we have them here on the board meeting, we've updated a few of them just a couple months, just a month ago. We put them on social media and the state of the village and other locations. Any public works projects near my property, this morning I see the village digging up near the retention pond, and I receive no information about it. The village does not have the resources to personally inform all 60,000 residents of the projects that they believe are concerns for them. That's just the truth. First, we do not know what information each person considers important. And second, think about the logistics of letting 60,000 residents know about their personal preferences. Lastly, we are consistently doing projects, many of them very small. You can always ask a crew what they're doing, I'm sure they'll be happy to tell you, but there is no way that we can notify people of every project, whether it be a parkway tree removal, or a replacement, a pothole we're fixing, a water main repair, which is more important to get repaired than to run around telling everybody about it, replacing street signs, which, how many street signs are we replacing over 11 years, Joel? Tens of thousands. Yeah. Fixing sidewalks, fixing sidewalk cracks, fixing, I mean, just on and on. We do have regular construction updates for many of our projects, and we do send letters and postcards for some of our projects, depending on the size. We also put information about road construction detours and projects on social media. A comprehensive map of the current and future bike-walking, running paths that connect all corners and central areas of Orland Park. I know this map exists, I'm assuming it's on the website, Ray? It's on the website, so that's what I thought. Activities for our villages, and there was a few of these. Activities for our villages, children, we have more children than senior citizens here. We have a ton, well, first off, we have a ton of activities for children. We have over 25 baseballs and softball fields, and soccer fields, and playgrounds, et cetera. I haven't seen too many senior citizens on those, I do know there is a senior league for softball. Not to mention all the various programs we have, we have a preschool that we operate for kids. Recently, we had an egg hunt, that's for kids, not for seniors. Ray, can you name a few of the other things that we do for kids?
We do, almost everything we do is for kids, so if you look at the sportsplex, almost everything there at the sportsplex is geared towards kids. So the fitness center is geared towards all age groups, 13 and older, but the whole first floor, including the climbing wall, all the soccer, all the hockey, all the basketball, volleyball, we do programs left and right, up and down over there, we have a thorough and large dance program, a huge dance program. You mentioned preschool, we have art classes, music classes, enrichment classes, so probably 75% or more of what we do is geared towards children.
Yeah, so thank you for that. And our village rec guide has all of those things listed. So I think that hits the highlights of the comments that we had, so hopefully the people who were commenting were, are actually watching. But anyways, so that gets that information out there.
An ordinance establishing a new Chapter 25 prohibition of kratom, novel, synthetic, and psychoactive drug businesses of Title VII business and license of the Orland Park Village Code.
Mr. Mayor. Trustee Reardon.
Move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance establishing a new Chapter 25 prohibition of kratom, novel, synthetic, and psychoactive drug business of Title VII business and license of the Orland Park Village Code."
Second. Are there any comments? Over and above, we already talked about it, the cow, at pretty great length. Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Orland School Districts 135 and 230 threat of litigation update.
Mayor, Village Board, at the last village board meeting, you may recall that staff provided an update regarding the downtown Orland Park project. And during that discussion, the matter of the threat of litigation against the village by Districts 135 and 230 was also discussed. As directed by the village board, a proposal was sent to the superintendents of the school districts, and it's attached to the agenda item here. As of right now, I have not received any response to the proposal. So at this point, there's really not much, not much update. The proposal was, till the end of, was active until the end of April.
So what we do know, because they did meet and there were minutes, is that they did discuss and vote unanimously, the six that were there voted unanimously to approve suing the village and directing the superintendent to do so. That was not at this meeting, but the one before that. At this meeting, we don't know if they discussed it publicly like we did or not, because again, when they came out of executive session, they video everything else, but then they're not videoing after they come back, which, that doesn't seem very right to me, I don't know if it's legal or not. I know here, we always make sure that we run the video after we come back out, even if it's for a short period of time, because we are obviously using that as a public record. So they should do the same, but they don't. So that's what we know, and we haven't heard back from them. I think we're also aware that District 230 tabled it, and so they have not taken any action on this at this particular juncture. So it seems like District 135 is going it alone at the moment, and we'll just have to see what they do, but you know, that offer, from my perspective, it's on the table right now, probably till their next board meeting after that, and maybe that's a couple weeks into May, but after that, the offer's off the table, and we'll just move forward. We're going to keep moving forward with everything else anyways, we'll just have to assume that all that other stuff is dead, because they just don't even want to respond. That would be my take, anybody? But the next board meetings, I think, are in the middle of May, so they're, that first board meeting they have in May, and then after that, we just move on, and either accept what we've offered them, or we just take that off the table, and we just keep moving forward with everything that we're doing.
Understood.
Tom?
The only thing I would add there is that District 135's case, it's a minimum of $3.6 million we're offering, and they're suing for what, maybe $500,000?
Yeah, the, considering how the TIF is going to be expiring in three years, it's a very limited amount. And also considering the original proposal that the village offered was $4.3 million to both school districts and...
Originally, the District 135 is getting about $5.9 million in total, with all the other stuff we offered.
With all the other stuff, yeah.
And so for a few hundred thousand dollars they're going to sue us, costs both taxing bodies paid for by the same, by the same taxpayers' legal fees, when they had $5.9 million on the table, and now they have $3.6 million plus, because there's probably some more benefits too. But at a minimum, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. Okay.
Non-scheduled citizen a visitor for public comment on items relevant to village business.
Anybody else here to speak?
Board comments.
Board comments. Trustee Reardon.
Thank you. Listening to those comments that came in, I just have to say that we, since I've been on this board almost three years now, we could not be more fiscally conservative and take our time and spend a great deal of effort in analyzing anything we do to spend your money. I mean, it's been the top thing that I think I said when I was running, so I want to make sure we're spending our tax dollars as efficiently as possible. And what you get in Orland Park, I mean, you just listed, Ray listed 15 things in 10 seconds, all the other things that you responded to, that you're getting for a very low amount of your levy for your taxes. I mean, it is not the money that the residents are spending, where they're spending the money is not here. I mean, you're getting a lot for that. So I would say call and ask, if someone's near your house and you don't know what it is, just call the village. And there's definitely someone that can tell you, in general, if not specifically, why they're there and what they're doing there.
Or ask the crew?
Or, yeah, ask them, they're, I mean, they've been by my house, and I have conversations. They're all very nice people, they're there to help, they're, you know, they're service employees, that's what they're doing there, they love their jobs, with their, the water people, the public works, whatever they're doing. So just ask them. And this is, my White Sox are so terrible, I'm hoping that we're celebrating the next time we're here, that the Bears are a completely different organization, because it'll be after the draft by then. And the Chicago Sky just drafted Cordozo and Angel Reese, and they play Katelyn Clark on June 23rd at home, so tickets are already shooting up like crazy, so that's all.
And I see you're taping everything on your phone, just so you know, these are all taped, and it's all on YouTube, so you can get all that if you want, and it's professionally done, so it's really a very good picture, so probably better than what you can get on your phone. Trustee Healy.
I was saddened to hear of the resignation of Kevin, our financial guy. I want to say that we met frequently, to discuss a number, you know, basically monthly, to discuss various financial matters. And we just discussed a whole lot of topics, but it was, Kevin, it was a pleasure discussing topics from the TIF district funding, to rates of return, budgeting ideas, and financial matters. Also, you have been exceptionally patient with my monthly AP inquiries, no matter how small.
Haven't we all?
I feel that I understand the nuances and subtleties better than anyone of your professional position. And I, you know, I just want to say that I recognize, you know, and appreciate your professional demeanor, financial wisdom, and management skills. In my eyes, you've done a great job. And I want to say thank you for choosing public service as a career, and you leave this community better than when you found it. Thank you, Kevin.
Trustee Reddeshewski.
I too want to say thank you, Kevin, and thank you for your time, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavor. And I'm really surprised that the tax guy here didn't send a reminder out to everybody that today is April 15th, so I will do so.
That's because he's done for the day.
Now it's time to extend you.
That's right.
Now it's time to file the extensions, right? Want to also thank everybody who did fill out the survey, it is important, you know, we rely on that information. When, you know, you fill that out and you provide us with that feedback, it helps us to provide a better service, so thank you for doing that. And also wanted to remind everybody about the Code Red notification system that we have, it was on our consent agenda this evening, which we voted for, and I had asked earlier today to get some stats on that, as far as how many people and businesses are signed up for that notification system. Thank you, George, thank you, chief, for providing me with that information. There is 48,915 people who are registered to receive those notifications, which is a lot, considering we're a town just shy of 60,000 people, so it's a pretty good majority that are signed up for it, and 5,668 businesses that are also signed up as well. But what this doesn't show is if your information is outdated. So if you signed up for it when we first implemented the system, and if you, you know, change phone numbers or whatever, please make sure you go into it and, you know, make the updates accordingly. And that's it, so thank you.
Trustee Compass.
So after that last beautiful weekend, I hope everyone was able to fully enjoy it. I'm now even more excited for the summer of music in the village's new venue space. An Almost Knockwood, from what I've seen from the development, really looking forward to this venue being a feature for decades to come. Space will be outstanding for not just the concert series, but also for The Taste of Orland Park, Market in the Park, and many other stage events to come. I'm grateful to everyone involved, and I know this is a very large group effort, but everyone, including but not limited to Public Works, Recreation, Development Services, Engineering, Reed Construction, and all our contractors, for making this vision a reality. It's going to be a great summer. Speaking of the concert series, all three headliners have now been announced, it is a fantastic lineup. On June 8th, we welcome Gary Laveau of Rascal Flatts with Hunter Hayes and Jesse Haynes. On July 13th, Pat Benatar and Neil Geraldo will be here, to the delight of multiple generations of my family, I hope yours as well. And then on August 17, One Vision of Queen featuring Mark Martel will take center stage. Opening for Mark that evening, Our Glory Days, a Bruce Springsteen tribute, and Billy Joel Nation, which, as you might very easily guess, is a Billy Joel tribute. For all those that have not yet gotten their tickets, orlandpark.org/cpwconcerts, to get more information on that, and thank you for Communications for setting that up. And thank you to everyone in Recreation for all of the hard work in putting this together, and I look forward to hearing more about The Taste of Orland and other future events to come. And a lot of people like to opine about the acts that we get, they have no idea how hard it is, the amount of discussions, the amount of work, the amount of effort it is to nail down an artist, to sign off and come out here, so thank you, Recreation. I hope everyone has a tremendous rest of the month. Thank you.
Trustee Katsinas.
Just wanted to say how proud I am of our staff, our attorneys, and fellow board members for yet doing another trailblazing event, you know, to protect our residents, but more importantly, to protect the children. I know we had some visitors here that weren't happy with what we decided to do, but we have to look at the greater good, and we've done that before with the opiates, thank you, Chief Schofield, you led the way on that, truly led the way in 2010. And again, to repeat myself, but to a broader audience, you know, you faced a lot of heat from doing that, and you were a lieutenant in the fire department. And people on this board, on this board, long before we were here, came at you for doing that, and came at you hard, and I remember that. And you've not given up the fight, you continue to do it, and now, you know, with this new drug coming out, your passion has not stopped. So I applaud you and thank you, and thank everybody who put together this ordinance. It is very important, that's our number one job, is to protect our residents, and this is the right step to do, the right thing to do. Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you, everybody. So I was out today, and I saw the field, so Shusha Park, you have one football field is completely turfed, so football, soccer, lacrosse, et cetera. So I know they have a little more work to do with that to completely tighten it down. So really coming along quite nicely. We've had some knock on wood, good weather. Let's hope it continues. Let's hope the stuff tomorrow bypasses us. We can get the rain in May after we have everything down, right? Because CPW is also coming along. They did grading today. I saw some sprinkler stuff out there today. I think they're supposed to be starting the paths tomorrow, weather-dependent. So knock on wood again. It looks fantastic out there. We've already heard from some soundstage guys that this will be one of the top venues in the Chicagoland area. To Trustee Compass's point, it's very difficult. People have no idea how much work goes into trying to get these acts, both within budget, but also good acts, and the right dates, and, you know, they can't be here because they're too close to a previous venue they played, and Chicagoland area is the hardest market in the whole country to book acts because there's so many going on, more than any other city. So I would contend that, well, so I'm not going to go into all the acts that are coming, but I'll start with the first one, Gary LaVox, the lead singer of Rascal Flatts that broke up a few years ago. They were fantastic in concert, and anyone who knows Rascal Flatts, it's all, you know, the singing is what's unique, and he was the singer, right? They had 17 number-one hits. So it should be a fantastic concert. Hunter Hayes also was Artist of the Year, New Artist of the Year like 10 years ago. So again, I mean, that's a really big act, and you're talking about, if you buy the ticket for 60 bucks, three events, $20 a ticket, you're basically there, 4:30 to 10:30 for two concerts, 6:30 to 10:30 another concert. You can bring in your own drinks, you know, your own beer, your own wine. You bring your own food. There's also going to be vendors there. I guess, I don't know where you're going to find that kind of entertainment anywhere else for 20 bucks. And oh, by the way, if you live in Orland Park, you're 10 minutes from home, at the most, no matter where you're at in Orland Park. So, I mean, it's just a fantastic venue, and it's going to be, it's going to be great. Kevin, good luck. I know this is your dream job with the GFPA, so really, you know, thanks for all that you've done here. I know we've gone through a lot, and so really appreciate it, and best of luck to you going forward. And I also want to thank our police department. Believe it or not, I know we've seen a bunch of stuff in the media and social media, and people are listening to our radios and all. We've seen some stuff this week. I will tell people, it's getting warmer out. It got warm, and it happens every year when it gets warm. Criminals come out, and we have this flux, which is what we're having right now. We're still down from last year, so we're doing pretty well, you know, as far as crime goes. But, you know, I'd be lying to you if I said the last couple of weeks, we haven't seen a bunch of stuff, because we have. And it's what's called 70-degree weather in April, and it just seems to bring some of the criminals out from hibernation. I guess they're like bears. But I also want to thank Deputy Chief West. I know we've said this before about your retirement and how you were such a professional. There were things that I knew, and maybe some of the board knew, but most people didn't. It's all out there now, what you've been going through, and you've maintained your professionalism for over a year in spite of everything that you've been put through. And so thank you so much for doing that. The people of Orland Park don't know how lucky they are, and if you read that whole thing, they'll understand how lucky they are. And I will also point out, because we've seen this in social media from a few people, this was a few people in the department. We have over 100 employees. We have 100 sworn officers, okay? It's a handful. You can count them on one hand that are causing those issues. Any organization with 100 people, you have some people that just aren't the best people in the world, and that's what we had in this case. Still, the overwhelming majority of our officers are the best of the best, and that's why we have such a great department. I know that Chief, Deputy Chief West, you believe that, and Chief Rossi, you believe that. And so, again, thank you guys for all that you do. I really appreciate it, and, you know, keep doing a great job keeping us safe, and we'll continue to support you like we did tonight with the ban on kratom. So thanks again. And for everyone else, let's hope this weather stays through May, and we don't see the pre-emergence of winter, and look forward to seeing everyone this summer at our various events. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.